I call to order the Board of Selectmen, and before we get going, we do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the resolve of all its standards, one nation, united in God, in this small, in justice, in law.
Thank you. If anybody's recording, they would please let me know, video or otherwise. Not seeing any. Okay. Want to call a meeting to order?
I call the school committee meeting to order at 5:07.
Call the finance committee to order at the same time.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. The reason for tonight's meeting is to go over with the Department of Revenue, they're going to go over with us exactly what's going on with the town finances and how we can approach town meeting. But first, I have some guests here, Senator Ann Goby and John Zlatnik.
Thank you to all the chairmen, and we'll be very, very -- do you want to stick over here? Okay. I'm sorry. You can get right in the middle.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Thank you, and first of all, I would like to say a special thank you to all the boards for helping to organize this with John and I. We were very glad to be able to bring the folks from the Department of Revenue. And Sean, thank you to your team. You have been extremely, extremely helpful. And all I want to say is this, look, tough times don't last forever. Tough people do. Tough people do. In this community, you have a very rich history. It's been going on 251 years, and this community is known for its resiliency, for helping each other out, and for standing by, and being there when times are tough. So we're going to get all through this together. I know that it's going to be some work, and I pledge to you to be there to help in any way that I can with your elected and appointed officials, and to work with the Department of Revenue, and to work for this community. So again, I'm going to be sitting over on the side, any way that we can be helpful. I've left some cards, and I'll leave a few others for you. But thank you, and you know, it's great to remember the past and to remember our history, but we have to work in the present and plan for the future. John?
Thank you, Senator. And just to reiterate everything Senator Goby just said, we're here to help, myself, the Senator, and everybody from DOR, so please take advantage of especially their probably combined hundreds of years of experience and knowledge on all local financial topics to ask questions and to get the information you need so that we can, like Ann said, start moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to introduce, we're going to go around the room and introduce ourselves because there's a lot of new faces here, so we're going to start down that end.
Darlene Rossi, Finance Committee.
Salak Kelfawi, Superintendent.
Danielle Hart, School Committee.
Amy Salter, Board of Selectmen.
Austin Seganowitz, Board of Selectmen.
Arde Labrie, Board of Selectmen.
Scott Livingston, Exting, Town Manager.
Tom Kane, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Mike Barbaro, Board of Selectmen.
John Harris, School Committee.
Christian Oribello, Finance Committee.
Greg Vine, School Committee.
Cindy Leroy, Finance Committee.
Barbara Anderson, Board of Selectmen.
Yulus Molet, Finance Committee.
Bob Gunther, Finance Committee.
Linda Daigle, Executive Assistant to the Selectmen and Town Manager.
Lauren Goldberg from Town Council.
Donna Allard, Town Accountant.
If I could ask the state representatives to introduce themselves.
Debbie Wagner, Division of Local Services, Bureau of Accounts.
Zach Blake, Division of Local Services, Technical Assistance.
I'm Tony Rassus, Deputy Director of Accounts, Bureau of Accounts.
I'm Sean Cronin, Senior Deputy Commissioner for Local Services.
I'm Rick Kingsley. I'm the Bureau Chief of Municipal Data Management and Technical Assistance.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your time spent out here. I know you've probably spent more time out here than you wanted to, but the purpose of this meeting is for you to go over what we can do on our town meeting coming up and what's going on with how the legislation took place. So there's a lot of people that don't particularly understand what has gone on or what you guys are currently doing, so if you could just give us a quick overview of how we came to be where we are, and then we'll go from there.
Sure. I'll kick it off, and I'm going to spare some of the details for Tony and Rick to get into. I'm going to speak a little bit above the weeds, so to speak. So thanks for having us here today. Sean Cronin, Senior Deputy Commissioner for Local Services. What I want to do is briefly review with you what the Division of Local Services does. We help Massachusetts municipalities achieve sound fiscal management through technical assistance, training, and oversight. We ensure the fairness and equity of property valuation. We interpret state laws that affect local governance, local finance. We distribute local aid, and we also obviously set tax rates, certify free cash, those types of things that you're very familiar with. But we provide a lot of support, advice, and guidance to all 351 cities and towns across the state, special districts, regional school districts. So we are truly here to help. In Winchandon, our staff has and will continue to work with you directly as you face these very difficult fiscal challenges. And I should say as a backdrop, I spent the last 17 years of my life doing municipal finance work in the town of Brookline as the Deputy Town Administrator. So local finance is what I've done, so I'm going to continue to do, and once I leave Division of Local Services and get back, hope to be managing a town. So for me, it's all about municipal finance. I think we should acknowledge upfront that the town certainly has taken some steps in the right direction. In many cases, local services, the folks at this table here, have actually helped play an important role in that. We've met with school and town officials in Boston, here in Winchandon. We facilitated an $8.3 million advance in local aid. We've obviously worked to secure $3 million in deficit financing notes. We've identified areas of concern, and we're currently working on a report, which is what Zach's handling right now. We executed the sale of deficit bonds in the amount of 3 million. A recap was submitted, and it was ultimately approved. We require a quarterly budget to actual reports within 30 days of the conclusion of the quarter, and we're happy to say that that's been going on as planned. You've taken steps to resolve payroll issues. Article 23 is setting up an audit committee, which is what we recommended. We asked the town consider appropriating $60,000 for either a new financial system or adjustments to the current financial system, and you have done that as well. Obviously, though, there remain some very significant hurdles that have to be addressed and overcome. The fiscal '15 budget appears to contain a deficit of at least $1 million, and continuing to simply borrow for those expenses which are all operating in nature simply is not a sustainable model. New leadership has clearly been elected, and with any administrative change, there's going to be a natural learning curve. And to address this issue, we strongly recommend that all new members of any board seek out the formal training that's available, whether it be from the Mass Municipal Association or the School Committee Association or Association of Town Finance Committees. Those are available, they're free. I would strongly recommend that you take advantage of those. We also invite you to attend our upcoming New Officials Finance Forum on June 2 in Marlborough. That's a day-long course intended for recently elected, newly elected officials to get a very broad overview of municipal finance, the budget process, how a tax rate is set, learn about reserve policies, debt policies, directly from local services staff. Further, it's designed to foster a team approach to municipal finance by developing and understanding the responsibilities of each separate party. Obviously, that's been lacking in the town of Winchandon. There hasn't been that coordination that I've been used to in the community I used to work for, where town and school relationship was at the utmost importance for us. Local Services wants to give the town of Winchandon and the new boards every chance to succeed, but we must acknowledge that there is significant work to be done. In the coming weeks and months, there'll be formal ways to measure and track your town's progress, closing the books for fiscal '15, looking at cash flow, setting the tax rate. Those are things that we'll be monitoring very closely. If there are no measurable improvements, additional state oversight will be seriously considered by the Division of Local Services in consultation with the Secretary of Administration and Finance. But the first step, and one that can be acted on immediately, is the town should seek an experienced town manager with a strong financial skill set in order to help the town close its books. In terms of the recruitment of a long-term town manager, resources are available to help you with that as well, both internally at local services. There's headhunting firms out there that can help you get the candidates that you need. You need somebody obviously with a strong financial skill set. I encourage you to engage with those entities immediately without delay because, in my opinion, that's the most important thing that this community needs to do, is find a qualified candidate with a very strong set of financial skills. Another imperative is regular formal meetings like you're having right now between the three boards. As I said before coming to Brookline, before coming to the state, I was in Brookline, and town-school partnership drove every single conversation we had during the budget process. It wasn't a "us versus them" mentality, it was a "town together" mentality. Town and school were one entity, and there are ways that the town and school in Winchandon can get there as well. In less than two months, the town's going to have to submit a pro forma recap within 10 days of the adoption of the budget, or July 1, whichever sooner. This step will provide a benchmark for your short-term progress, as well as an opportunity to demonstrate your commitment to administrative communication and collaboration. For our part, our Technical Assistance Bureau, Rick and Zach, we're currently undertaking the financial management review of your community. That analysis, which hopefully will be ready for you in about a month, in mid-June, and the recommendations that come from that, will play a key role if you adopt them in shaping the town's financial future. So we hope that you give those serious consideration when they're presented to you. It's extremely important that the suggested best practices in financial management practices be given full consideration. We obviously are not in a position to demand that you adopt these, but we can view them as an example of your willingness to work with us to install new systems, new practices, and new protocols to avoid future financial issues. We are going to look at the report as a roadmap to guide your community to your goals. It will provide the basis for a timeline for major and necessary long-term reform. As I've indicated, we want to give the town of Winchandon every chance to succeed, a brand-new Board of Selectmen, every chance to succeed, and we look forward to the coming weeks and months as we mutually strive to ensure that success. So now I want to ask Tony and Rick to speak to some of the more specifics, which is probably what you're a little bit more interested in, and then I'll come back and just give a closing comment or two.
Thank you, Sean. Again, I'm Tony Rassus, and I'm Deputy Director of Accounts. What I want to do is I want to mention 10 things to you, and some of these things you may hear, you may have heard Sean say one, and maybe you'll hear it again from Rick, but that's all right, because they're very important. So they're things that we want you to remember and take note of, and take very important note of. The first thing is you want to make sure that you take a look at Chapter 448, 448 of the Acts of 2014, excuse me. That is the Winchandon legislation, and that is what is guiding us in how we're going to be helping you get this all back into place. That's an important piece of legislation, so you should look for it if you're on the computer tonight or something. Take a look for it on the Massachusetts Legislature's website or somewhere where you'll find Chapter 448 of 2014. Particular provisions that I want to mention regarding that law. Number one, with regard to the borrowing, that's what let you balance the budget in 2015, was the ability to borrow funds for the deficit that occurred in 2014. Normally, that doesn't happen. For 100 years, the legislature hasn't wanted a city or town to borrow money just for operations, but in special cases, this is what they have to do. And you were allowed to borrow money for operations to get out of this trouble. And it took that legislation, and just because it authorized you to borrow that money didn't mean that the banks were going to loan it to you, it just gave authorization. This legislation was very important to the lenders who lent you that money, because without it, they probably wouldn't have lent you the money. So this was very important, that the lender can see that somebody's watching what's going on from the state and is making sure that you'll be able to pay that money back. My name appears on that note, so I have a particular interest to be sure that this is going to happen. But that was one piece of this legislation. Another piece that's very important involves what is called a pro forma recap. Now, this is something that is put together before your tax rate is put together, which probably won't be until later this calendar year. But it's something that gives us an idea as to whether you have a balanced budget or not. And the legislation says that we have to know this, and we certainly want to know it sooner than later. We don't want to find out at the last minute that there's a problem with the budget. And it's something that you should take particular note, the Finance Committee should be taking particular note of this as well. You'll be looking at the articles that are approved by town meeting, and you can assume that they all get approved, or whichever ones finally get approved. And then you look at a couple of other particular items of expenditure, your state cherry sheet, which Rick will talk about afterwards, but the number hasn't been approved yet, but it will, it will pretty soon. You have some numbers out there that are floating around that we've issued that you might want to take note of, as well as your overlay. And of course, the overlay amount is the amount that you put aside for abatements to your homes that are over-sassed, or for the old people that qualify for an abatement and so forth. And all of these monies that you plan to appropriate and to expend are then reduced by certain revenue amounts. And the revenue amounts include what Prop 2.5 allows you to raise in property taxes, the amount that the state is planning to give you as part of the cherry sheet, as part of your reimbursements and disbursements on the cherry sheet. And especially what are called estimated receipts, the estimated receipts of a non-property tax receipts, like your motor vehicle excise receipts, money that you get from licenses and fees and interest on your money in the bank. Those are very important, because by law, you can estimate what you received in the last fiscal year. But in this case, we're going to be making, we're going to keep a closer eye on this, that we want to make sure that there isn't an amount included in the estimate that was a one-time payment possibly in the previous fiscal year. We don't want to overstretch these receipts. And on the other side, on the increase from last year's actual, I'm going to be looking, because this is something that has to come through me. I'm going to be looking, if there's a one penny increase, I want to know why. I want to make sure that we're doing this right. And so that's an important thing for the Finance Committee, that you're looking at these revenues to see that they're reasonable in amount, and that when you work together with the town accountants and the finance team in the town of Winchandon, that when they put this information together and they look at what's been appropriated and other amounts that are added, subtracting what 2.5 allows and all of that, that we get to a balanced budget. And that's very important, that's something that we're going to be looking at here, and that's something that you have to be sensitive to as well. You want to make note, there's a couple of articles that I've noticed on your upcoming town meeting. One has to do with your stabilization fund, which is going to be very helpful here. I'm glad that you have it. I'm glad that you've put that money aside through the years, because that's going to be something that you may have to rely on. Some people call the stabilization fund like a second rainy day fund. The first rainy day fund everybody thinks of is free cash, but you don't have any, so don't worry about the free cash. Let's worry about the second rainy day fund, the stabilization fund. And you're certainly, it's very difficult when you rely on this fund, because it doesn't just materialize. You have to plan for it. You have to put money in there in order to have some money in it. If you keep taking money out of it, you're not going to have anything left. So you have to be careful, you have to use it wisely, but you should be happy that it is there. And if the town meeting should so choose to appropriate from that source of funding, that's fine, but use it in a reasonable fashion. Don't just depend on it, because as I say, it doesn't just materialize. And there's another article on there regarding overlay surplus. That overlay surplus is another available sum of money that you can use to appropriate, but from what I can tell, I don't think you have any. Overlay surplus, keep it in mind, listen to what your accountant and your tax collector are going to be telling you. If they tell you that there isn't any overlay surplus, excuse me, don't vote from overlay surplus until there is some, so be very careful there. Another very important piece of this legislation is the reports that have to be presented. They're quarterly reports. The quarterly reports, hopefully you will be seeing reports more often than on a quarterly basis. You're looking at the reports so that you can see whether half the money's been spent in the quarter amount of time, or 100% of the money's been spent in half the time, or how much money is being spent, because this is giving you an idea of how you're spending the appropriation. And that is super important, because we don't want to hear any longer that no one knew how much money they had to spend. All right, maybe that got us into a mess, but we don't want to hear it anymore. This is how much you have, you have to make sure that that accounting software is going to work, and if it doesn't work, then you're going to make it work. You're going to do whatever you have to do to make it work, because we're going to rely on it too. We're going to look at these numbers and say, okay, it looks like you're overspent here, you're underspent there, and then we have to decide what has to happen. So that's a very important report that you should be looking at, and that's to keep your eye on, is how much is being spent after how long a period of time. Your audit report, you spend good money to have an audit. I hope you read it. I hope you get together maybe as a group like this and talk about it. Hopefully, your auditor has been here to sit in front of you and talk about it. So the audit report has a lot of numbers, and I know a lot of people, they get turned off because there's so many numbers, nobody understands what they mean sometimes. But they make recommendations, and that I think a lot of people can understand. And those recommendations are important, because all we're trying to do, the audit report, the work that Rick is doing, the work that Zach is doing, we're trying to provide a roadmap on how to get you back into a fiscal health here. We're all trying to help. And it's that audit report that gives you ideas, and it's something that you should see, look at, attempt to read, and question. You know, what is it trying to tell us if you don't know? And ask the right people. We need that audit report in order to set your tax rate. In fact, we need your balance sheet as well in order to set your tax rate. So those are things that have to be submitted by the legislation, that have to be submitted to us before we can set that tax rate, which again, won't be until sometime around, oftentimes November, December, sometime at the end of this calendar year. But these are things that have to happen in order to get that tax rate done. If there's any other debt that the town is going to consider, whether you're purchasing a capital project, or you're borrowing in the meanwhile, or something, any debt has to run through me, I have to approve it. And I'm going to keep my eye on that, because anything that you want to borrow, you've got to pay back the bank. And I've got to make sure that you're going to be able to pay back the bank. And I've got to make sure that you've got the interest put aside so you can pay back the bank. So it may not be just a matter of the principal, but the matter of the interest. And if you don't, then I'm going to have to say no. So if somebody is saying, you know, we're going to have to borrow this money, and is the money in the budget? That's what you should be asking, is the money in the budget? If the money's not in the budget, be very careful about what you're doing, because that's going to be a very important point that I'm going to be looking at. You have a special fund that is created by the legislation, and during the budget process, maybe you've heard along the way, it's a reserve fund that you put aside, and it's about $78,000 or so thousand that I believe is in the Finance Committee budget, do I understand, Donna, that it's in there? But know that it's in there because of the legislation. You can read the Chapter 448 and see how you use it. But that is something that is a commitment on the part of the town, to put money aside in this way gives you like a cash float if you don't use it. You're going to have some cash available just in case, in case you need it as a cash float. But you'll notice in that legislation that you have a supplemental reserve fund that you can use, that you can appropriate, but take a look at the legislation and you can see what that's all about. You are going to be seeing a budget that may be different than what you're used to. And I don't mean dollars, I mean in the presentation and the voting of what might be considered the bottom line. In the past, the budget's been voted, the school department can vote the budget in the bottom line, that's fine. But as for the town, it's in the town's best interest to look at these budgets by line item. You want to hold the department heads to something more than just the bottom line of the entire town budget, so I can say, oh, Department Head Number Two, do you mind, I'm going to take $50,000 of your money? Oh, well, maybe, maybe yes, maybe no. We can't have that. You want to have everybody accountable and everybody responsible for their budget. And if, you know, in my way of thinking, if somebody says, oh, I don't know how much my budget is, I'm really not sure, I don't rely on the computer, the computer doesn't work, and all this business, I say, take out a piece of paper and a pencil and figure it out that way. I've said that to people before. If you can't figure it out with the computer, figure it out on a piece of paper. And, you know, because we don't want to have that line item overspent. And if there's a possibility that it should, that is going to have to be overspent, it should be transparent, everybody should understand, do we need a town meeting, do we need a reserve fund transfer from the Finance Committee, how are we going to solve this? And that makes everybody more responsible for their budget line item, all the department heads. And you know, finally, communication. Communication is important. There was something that the former Director of Accounts, who has now retired, he asked the town to do some time ago, and I think that there is some beginnings of this. He's asked the boards, as we see tonight, to communicate with each other. Don't just sit in your own offices or your own rooms and deliberate. Get together and talk about what's going on, because that is going to make everybody understand what is happening with the financial situation in the town. You should have representatives sit with the finance team, the town accountant, the town manager, the collector treasurer, sitting in a room discussing what the situation is, the assessor you can include, maybe even the town clerk. Everybody's sitting around from their perspective, this is what's happening. And then having that representative report back to each one of your committees to explain, this is what we're hearing, that things are going wrong, or things are going right. Hopefully, things are going right. And the other group that should get together, maybe the heads of the boards, that the head of the Finance Committee, the head of the Board of Selectmen, the head of the School Committee, get together every so often and sit around, and what problems are you having? Well, this is the problems that I'm having, and let's see if we can iron them out. But it's all through communication that I think that is going to help you get back on track. And as Sean was saying, that's what we're going to try to do, that's how we're going to help to the extent that we can, help this town get back on track financially, and we hope that it'll be done relatively quickly. So now, I'm going to pass the microphone to Rick Kingsley, who is the Chief of the Municipal Data Management Technical Assistance Bureau. data management technical assistance bureau.
Thank you very much, Tony. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. I should probably start by letting you know that I've been involved in numerous situations like yours in the city of Chelsea, the city of Springfield, Brockton, Athol, Royalston Regional School District, the Nishoba Regional School District, a whole bunch of different situations like yours. So rather than get into, you know, Tony covered a lot of the details, I'll kind of come up a little bit from the ground level and just try and put this in perspective a little bit about what you'll be facing in the next year or two because it's somewhat daunting. It really is. And we are concerned. So right now, you've borrowed $3 million. $3 million is roughly what percent of your budget? Your budget's around 28 million? It's 10 and 1/2, 11% of your budget. If you borrow another million dollars on top of that, so that's $4 million, that's about 14% of your budget. Those are pretty big numbers. That's a pretty daunting shortfall there. So what do you do about it? Well, as Tony mentioned, chapter 448 of the Acts of 2014 authorized you to deficit borrow. Without that legislation, you would not have been allowed to borrow for this deficit. But I think that's preferable than the other option in that legislation, which was amortizing that deficit over 10 years. The problem with that is you don't have the cash. At least the borrowing put the $3 million back into your coffers and topped up your cash a little bit so that you had some room to operate going forward. So I think that was probably the better approach. The other thing I should mention is that the deficit borrowing allowed you to borrow up to $6 million. I would not advise that in any way, shape, or form. What you want to try and do is whatever the problem turns out to be this fiscal year, whether it's 800,000, a million, a million two, or a million three, whatever that number turns out to be, and it's still in flux, those numbers are changing, evolving every day. So it's really important that you get a handle on where you stand in 15. The other thing I'll mention about the deficit notes is those were authorized to be issued as qualified bonds. The municipal finance oversight board approved the issuance of qualified bonds. Some of you probably don't know what qualified bonds are, but essentially what we do, our office pays local aid, distributes local aid to cities and towns on a monthly basis. So when there are qualified bonds, we take that money out of your local aid payment, send it over to the treasury, and the treasury pays your bondholders directly from your local aid. What's the advantage to that? Well, you get, essentially, you get the state's bond rating, which is very high. It's a AA1. You get a hair under that rating, but it's a terrific rating. The $3 million you've borrowed is costing you less than 15 grand in interest a year, which is terrific. That's the good news. The bad news, however, is if you borrow more money, let's say another million dollars for the sake of argument, and your debt service payment approaches 425 grand a year, and this is a 10-year issue, these are notes that are rolled over every year with a pay down, okay? So this is going to be for 10 years that you'll have that obligation. So we're at about 430,000 for the debt service plus that fiscal stability reserve that Tony mentioned, roughly 77,000 this year. So you're over a half a million dollars that you have to pay every year for the next 10 years. So essentially, what this does for your budget process is it's as if you're starting 100-yard dash 10 yards behind the starting line, you know? So that has to be dealt with every year. So that will be hard. So, you know, using that math, you can see if you borrow $6 million, you're going to have 750,000 that you'll have to carry every year. And after a point, it becomes unsustainable. It's not the way to get out of this situation. The way you get out of it is through careful management, laser-like focus on your accounts, what's happening in them, understanding them, communicating with department heads so that they're not leaving bills in the drawer, and presenting them to your town accountant on July 7th, for example. You really need to focus on that. And my primary advice is you need to get an interim manager in here yesterday. And that person has to work with your financial team, your treasure collector, your accountant, your assessors, work with your department heads, and really figure out where you stand at the end of this fiscal year, which is coming up on June 30th, okay? The books have to be closed. I'm very concerned about you having enough cash to meet your bills. And as Sean said, we advanced the town $8.3 million during the course of this year from your local aid. So you've been getting zero in terms of monthly local aid, give or take, because we paid that whole 8 million, you know, beginning in October, we started making these advance payments to the town. So cash continues to be a problem. You've only got about a million two in your stabilization fund, or that should be the balance when you move all the cash back into it. If you're running deficits of about a million two, well, guess what? That tells me that there's not a lot of cash to work with. And if you have bond payments to be made beginning of July, you have pension payments to be made in the beginning of July, that's a concern because you can't really borrow any more money until your books are closed and we know what the deficits are for 15. So you won't really have access to that deficit bond right away in July. So that's the sense of urgency here. You really need to come to grips with where you stand in fiscal 15 on both the school side, where I have some concerns in terms of some of the sped accounts. I don't know if all those expenses have been reclassed to the circuit breaker that they, that can be. But we have concerns about the town side budget, the school side budget in 15, and the ramifications of those shortfalls on your cash position and whether you'll be able to make payroll and pay your vendors in the beginning of July. Because your first local aid payment for 16, once the state budget is set, will not come in until the end of July, right? So there's some issues there. So I cannot emphasize enough that you need to get somebody in here right away. You can use the Collins Center. I think Sean mentioned a couple of options. I would definitely reach out to the Collins Center. They can tap into a network of experienced managers that might be willing to come in here for two or three months. But the emphasis is on getting someone here tomorrow, okay? Not in two months. Two months is too late. The fiscal year's over. Whatever happens, happens, but it's important that you get somebody in place to manage this, okay? So I can't emphasize that enough. And as Sean mentioned, we will advise you as best we can. We have a limited role, almost no role in this per the legislation. But it's so important that we think it's a priority for the town, it's a top priority, and we are willing to give you advice, counsel, guidance, and support in this decision. So that's really all I've got to say. I don't know if Sean has any closing arguments. With that, we rest our case.
Thank you. My understanding at this point is on the town articles, you had some questions of what we shouldn't, should not be doing? And some of them go back to the special town meeting, which is at the beginning.
Mr. Chairman, could you be more specific? Which one?
My understanding is you wanted us to pass over the deficit legislation articles, the school articles. It's not so much so everybody here understands, but also, we're going to be in town meeting next Monday, so they're going to need, somebody's going to need to explain to them, and you happen to be the people here that really know how to do it.
With respect to the articles, I think it was the two and three that had, that were regarding the deficit, that is not something that you need to vote on. Oh, thank you. Not something that you need to vote on because that is something that is handled by that legislation that will allow you to borrow with the permission of the director of accounts or my, in this case, it's me. You would be allowed to borrow for whatever deficit we're looking at. And remember, this is important. And Rick was saying, we knew that there was a deficit at the end of fiscal 14. We knew that there was going to be a deficit in fiscal 15. We just didn't know exactly how much. But the deficit, the deficit that we knew is not something that must be an annual event. It's not like we're going to keep overspending until, you know, we feel like stopping. We knew that certain accounts were underbudgeted, and we took that into consideration. I'm concerned about other things that may have cropped up along the way. And as Sean mentioned before, we don't want to see other things cropping up annually because that could all of a sudden spark a greater intervention on the part of the state. And you don't want that. So we don't want to see that. But as far as the articles that say deficit legislation borrowing, there is really nothing to vote on unless you wanted to vote on it from your own funds. If somebody was to say, ah, we want to use a motion to use a stabilization fund or something like that, well, that's fine if you want to do that. That'd be something that you wouldn't have to borrow. But if we're going to rely on the borrowing, then it is not a vote that you need to take.
So would that, if I understood that correctly, that would be article two and three, and that would also wrap up five and six, correct?
Five and six. The overlay, oh, yes. Well, those are deficits, five and six. What's that?
Those are from the stabilization?
If five and six, that is not something that you necessarily need to pass over, five and six. Five and six, there is whether you would transfer from a stabilization fund. It also says to raise and appropriate. Now, if you're going to raise and appropriate, that means it's going to be greater pressure upon the tax levy. If we were going to make a request that these should be borrowed from, remember, as Rick was saying before, well, now that's money that you're going to borrow and you're going to have to end up paying that back over how many years? But if you were to use the stabilization fund, if that were thought to be the best way about it, then the stabilization fund would pay that dollar amount, and that's it. It would draw down your stabilization fund, yes, but these are the hard choices. That's why the finance committee and the selectmen get paid the big money. You have to make these tough choices. So that's as far as those particular articles. And then articles four, five, and six at the annual meeting regarding overlay surplus. I had mentioned be very careful about how much we're appropriating from overlay surplus because you may not have as much as originally thought. And that's something, in fact, you may not have anything. If you don't have anything, now you have to make a decision. Is it something that you have to have and how are you going to fund it? Are we going to fund it from the tax levy? We're going to fund it from the stabilization? We're going to forget about it? So that's another tough decision and a tough recommendation that you just have to make with regard to those particular articles.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. When will we know if, in fact, there is money in those, the overlay surplus account?
No, right now, there is none.
There is none. So we do know that there is none. Thank you.
Just if I might move back to article five and six, the appropriations from stabilization, those to me just seem like supplementing existing accounts at a special town meeting from stabilization, and I don't see any issue with that really.
The one thing I would say about that is those are estimates. They're not final definite deficit amounts yet. So consider that when you take.
Those are projected amounts. I understand that.
Those are projected amounts, yeah.
But if they go down, if the town votes not to do, take no action.
Correct.
And at the end of the year, there's a deficit.
Correct.
Will that be taken care of through the deficit legislation?
Any deficits that the town cannot finance themselves at the end of fiscal 15, I believe, will be covered by the deficit legislation. Obviously, we prefer you to resolve any deficit amounts yourself first, use whatever available resources you have. The borrowing really should be the well of last resort.
Thank you. I mean, my approach to, the way I would look at this, minimize the amount you borrow. Minimize the amount you borrow. So you've got a million two in stabilization. It wouldn't trouble me if you drew down 300,000 or 400,000 of that. I wouldn't want to see you get below 600,000 or 700,000. But, you know, take a balanced approach. The snow and ice deficit, there's a three-year amortization allowed under state law now for the snow and ice costs for this year. So that's an option too. It's not a huge cash impact for you, so amortizing that might make more sense. But again, I would, if I were in your shoes, I would try and be minimizing the amount you have to go to that borrowing well.
Mr. Chairman?
Rick and Greg Vine from the school committee, newly elected to the school committee. So something you said made me a little bit nervous. You said you had concerns about the town spending, but also about the school department budget as well. Is that nervousness based on the budget that we put together for the upcoming fiscal year or because?
No, it's, I haven't reviewed your 16 budget proposal in any way, shape, or form. It's looking at your expenditures to date through April. That gives me some concern. And again, the missing piece is I don't know how much, you know, it's showing sped in deficit, and I don't know how much of that, how much of those expenditures can be transferred to the circuit breaker. I don't know how much has already been transferred, but it seems like there's maybe another $250,000 that can be shifted to circuit breaker.
All right. The reason I ask is I don't know, I'm not a, I'm many things, but a financial whiz kid is not one of them. And I'm just concerned, with your concerns, about getting up in front of the town meeting and recommending the budget that's put before them and saying, you know, vote for it, everything's going to be fine. But the DOR is a little concerned about some details.
Well, you know, the way I would look at that, I mean, you need to adopt a budget. You don't have the luxury of redoing the budget, probably because your town meeting's Monday night.
Right.
So, you know, there isn't a lot of money to divvy up between the municipal side and the town side and still pay your bond costs, your deficit bond costs. So the way I would look at it is, you know, the school committee and the superintendent are going to have to live within that budget and manage within that budget. And, you know, if it's, so you need to cost out staff. You know, what kind of staff do you have on the payroll right now? What kind of step increases, lane changes you might project? And do you have enough money to sustain that level of staffing into FY16? And I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question?
May.
Tony, is it? This may be asking for sort of an elementary course in how finances work, but when you talk to some people on the street, when they look at the legislation that was approved that allows us to borrow, some think that the town is borrowing that money directly from the state. And there's a lot of, I mean, there's some confusion as where the money that we're allowed to borrow is actually coming from. Can you explain just a little bit as to, you know, where are we borrowing? Is it giving the town permission to borrow from certain banks? Or do we go to the state and then they approve the borrowing? How does that work?
Yeah, that's a good point because I've heard that come up along the way. You had to go out on the market and borrow that money. You didn't borrow it from the state. You didn't borrow it from the state or the Division of Local Services or from me or someone. You had to borrow that money from the marketplace. And as I had said in, in my comments before, the marketplace didn't have to give you the money. And they probably would not have if it wasn't for this legislation. We've seen that before in other cases, and thank goodness, not too many cases, but we have seen it in other cases where the banks would just not lend because they were not convinced that the money could be paid back. So legislation was passed, and if you remember, Rick talked about the, about these, about the debt being state qualified. And what that means is that we actually put a, a hold on your state aid so that the state aid will pay the bank. We won't give it to you even though you've made the appropriation locally. The money will come directly from the state aid and, and the accountant knows how to do the accounting, don't worry about that. But the, it's the state aid. So the bank feels better about that because they know that if there's state aid available, then they'll get their money. And if they'll get their money, they'll loan you the money. So it, it, you had to do that outside in the private market. They, it was not money that was borrowed from the state budget.
Okay, so, and the state is not the guarantor of the money either?
No, no, it's.
And also the full payment credit of the town.
It's, it's a general obligation for those, for those bonds, which means that you're guaranteeing, but as I said, my name's on that, on that note. So I said that you can pay it back and if, if we can't, then the bond, the lenders are going to get mad at me, too.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make that clear.
No, that was a good point. That's a good point. Mr. Chairman, the other particular article here that, that, I don't know if we mentioned it along the way, but Article 15, with regard to exclude school portion of annual deficit repayment, and the source is reduce indirect costs. Frankly, I don't know what that means. And so don't vote on that unless everybody knows what the result of that vote is. Now, maybe this, I've heard suggestion, maybe we'll pass over it, maybe we'll vote, maybe we won't. But know what it means before you vote it because if it means that we've cut the school budget, or does it mean that we now have to raise that money on the town side, 207,000? What, what does this vote do? I have no idea myself.
The other thing you should know is that the, you can allocate a share of the deficit to the school department. However, it's not net school spending eligible. It will not help you meet your net school spending requirement. That money has, the money that you borrowed for was spent in 13, 14, and 15. It's already been reported to DESE, and so this, this 200,000 will not, will not count towards net school spending.
Then if, if it doesn't count towards net school spending, then clearly it's not a part of the indirect costs. It can't be calculated as part of the indirect costs. Net school spending is the sum total of the school department's allocation and indirect costs that the town pays for. So what I'm hearing you're saying is that calculating the indirect costs, this 200,000 cannot be part of that.
Correct.
Well, because of the nature of the 207.
Yeah.
The nature of it.
Yeah. It's debt service.
It, it's, as I understand it, is debt service, Rick, you probably know better than I do, is debt service on the deficit notes attributable
To past overspending. So, so in other words, the, the amount you borrowed, the $3 million, is to cover money that has already been spent in prior years, essentially. Spent and reported to the Department of Ed when you recently submitted your end-of-year reports for 13, 14, and 15, I believe, right? So, so they've, they've already given you credit for those expenditures, so they can't double count them when you borrow money for them. And ordinarily, debt service is not an allowable cost for net school spending?
The, the way that it was calculated is because the bulk of the debt was through healthcare and
They have the majority of their employees.
The more, majority of the employees were school side and the town manager had calculated that 66% of the overall debt belonged to the school side. And told us, and the budget's built such, in such a way, that that is built into the indirect costs. Now, you're telling me we can't do that?
You, you can check with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I would suggest you call Jay Sullivan, who heads up their finance unit. I spoke to him myself about this. He told me it's not eligible.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Isn't that, isn't the issue of whether it counts? I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Lauren, pull the mic closer to you.
Isn't the question of whether it can be characterized as indirect costs for net school spending different than how it's characterized as indirect costs in the town budget? Because I, I believe that the chair's reference to the way that the budget was constructed is that those amounts were calculated as part of the quote-unquote indirect costs for purposes of allocating what was raised and appropriated in the general fund budget article and what was going to be raised and appropriated in this Article 11 or 12.
Well, I, I suppose you could use that as an indirect cost to further reduce the amount that the School Committee has to spend, but that would leave you 200, other things being equal, 200,000 short of net school spending, if that answers your question.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
So, from the way that it looks to me, Articles 11, 12, and 15 are related to one another. They address the school budget. And Article 11 proposes an appropriation that just says less indirect costs. And then Article 12 says the particular amounts and it shows how that's been calculated. My concern is that if Article 11 is voted without identifying what those indirect costs are, that we're going to wind up with 200,000 extra dollars appropriated, essentially, because Article 12 has taken that 200,000 out, basically, and said, okay, that was appropriated as indirect costs in the general fund budget. So I think it would be useful to have some guidance as to what number should be voted for the school budget. And ultimately, whether that counts or doesn't count for net school spending is, it's incredibly important as well as whether we've come forward with a balanced budget that meets what was appropriated in the general fund as well, or that, that balances that out. So I, I think it's important to try and figure out whether, you know, the Article 11 number is a number that will wind up with the town having appropriated that 200,000 in both the general fund budget article and again, under Article 11.
Well, I, I'm not sure how that all shakes out, but it's not net school spending eligible. I see your concern. It's budgeted in its entirety in the debt service section of the budget. So this is really just a memo-only kind of entry in terms of the indirects. I, I suppose what you could do is, you know, if you lower that indirect cost, you would probably have to lower the, is the 16, 16.5 is your net school spending plus 300,000?
Is that right?
Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Well, it might, you know, if, if you want them to pay for this, it, it's really, you know, that, that 16.5 gets reduced by 200,000.
Right.
And you take it out of the indirects in 12. That's the way I see the math working.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may.
Sure.
That, that's what my concern was when I was looking at the motions, is to try to figure out, you know, where that 200,000 is going to be appropriated. And if it's duplicated, then obviously, when they submitted the pro forma recap, they'd be off by the 200,000.
Yeah.
So I think there needs to be some agreement as to how those motions are going to be made so as to address that rather than have to come back to a special town meeting, which obviously costs money as well.
If I may, I think it was a, there was a discussion between the two boards, the Board of Selectmen and School Committee, to not look at Article 11, but look at Article 12. That would give you the, the 12,721. When we did this, the budget for this, we did include the 300 of the override, but we also included the payment, it's already projected in it, the payment of 207. So I believe at the end of this, the discussion will be a moot point because the 207 is less than the 300, which is in excess of the net school spending. So even if the schools will pay this amount, it, they will not be accounted against net school spending because we have 300,000 above net school spending. The only time this would be, would run into not meeting net school spending is should the town meeting decide to reduce our budget by not, not appropriating, not giving us the 300,000 because that was never essentially guaranteed. We're just asking for it. As long as they approve to give the 300,000 as they did last year, if that 207,000 that we'd pay, the schools would pay toward this, will be absorbed within the 300, so we will not be in violation with DESE net school spending. Is that clear?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, I believe there was, the idea was the, was to pass over Article 11 and go with Article 12. But I, I have to come back to something because when the indirect costs were built in the budget, that was part of how it was built.
Yes.
Now, the 300,000 that you currently see over net school spending is to pay for preschool, which can't go into net school spending. So if that 200,000 has to come out of this 300,000, this town has no preschool because of the way the budget's been constructed. If it does not come out of the indirect costs as it was built, it now has to come out of the 307 because you can't use that money. We can't use net school spending for preschool. The preschool program just went away. You, does everybody understand what just happened?
No.
No.
Okay. If I'm correct in understanding what they're saying, you can't use, you cannot use the indirect costs which would count against your net school spending, correct? So the only other avenue we have is the 300,000 over net school spending to pay the, to pay the 207 debt. Am I understanding what you guys just said?
Well, you've already budgeted for
But it's in the indirect cost, but you said we couldn't use it in the indirect cost.
It's going to count towards your net school spending.
Right.
It's not counting towards net school spending. You've got a balanced budget including preschool.
But it's, but it's based on the, on the 300, on the 300, it's based on the 300,000 on the override. Because other than the 300,000 override, we're at net school spending.
No, you, yes.
Okay.
But built into your budget, including the 300,000, is the cost of preschool. Is that fair, Dr. Capaldi?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That your, your school budget currently includes the cost of your preschool program?
It's right now, there's a late decision because we had to do, that's what we did the net, the last iteration of cuts to make sure that, that the
So
Yes. I said, yes. The answer is yes, at the last iteration of cuts. That's what we did.
And, and the current indirect costs is also built into your budget right now.
Correct.
You, you have a balanced budget that, that accounts for the, the figure that's in the warrant right now.
Correct.
So my point, my point in this, by the way, is that the budget covers the preschool program and it covers the amount of money that had been recommended as indirect costs.
I, I, I have to come back to where I was saying. The indirect costs were built with the 200,000 in it, okay? That doesn't count to net school spending, okay? Preschool cannot be paid for out of net school spending.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. I see exactly what you're talking about.
So you can't pay for preschool, which the budget was built on, because I know, was using the 307,000 to budget to pay for preschool. Now, if we ha, if we can't use the indirect cost formula that's been already set up, you have to take the 207 out of this. That leaves you at $100,000. Are you, are you following what I'm saying? So that means the preschool program, which was scheduled to be paid out of the, out of the 300 over net school, because the only avenue you have, is gone. So the, the formula of the indirect cost was wrong.
Mr. Chair.
It's
Mr. Chairman, I think it would make good sense to talk tomorrow to DESE and perhaps the Superintendent and I can, can do that together.
I think if I, I, I understand it because we, we have talked to Mr. Jay Sullivan and he had explained to us a couple of things. And in the past, we were told that preschool is not part of net school spending. And up to this year, we have always had extra funds revolving funds that funded the excess in preschool. This year, not having those, we had to limit, and that's why we made cuts within the preschool, to limit the spending of preschool to a maximum of 300 because that is the amount that we were expecting from the town above the net school spending so that we do not violate that other rule. My mind was on a different thing. Now, I think it's an issue of allocation, not necessarily an issue of funds, that availability of funds. It's an issue of allocation that if we, if we are not allowed to, to, if we use up, technically, legally, we're using up the 207,000 as from the 200, from the 300 above net school spending, that leaves us only with 93,000 to spend toward the preschool. Then we, we'd have to talk to Mr. Sullivan and he will give us some guidance how to deal with that because I don't think I know the answer.
Mr. Chair, I, I as well, you know, I think the question of how we're characterizing or how, how DESE would characterize the deficit, borrowing, payment will dictate essentially where the budget is here. But again, I think if you appropriate it twice, if you, if you change the indirect, if you used Article 15, as Mr. Rassus was saying, to exclude the 207 from the indirects, then the question is where is that additional money coming from in Article 12? So that would leave us 207,000 over budget, it seems to me.
That's right.
Yeah. So I think it would make sense to talk to Mr. Sullivan tomorrow and, and try and figure out what his position is and whether there's any leeway, particularly for this year and where we are in the budget process and the fact that there's, you know, a town manager issue in terms of trying to bring in someone to, to look at the financial situation and close out the books for this fiscal year.
But you understand what I'm saying, right?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
So, I'm not crazy.
I would never insinuate that, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's, the point was, you said we couldn't use it in the net school spending. That's how it was built in our indirects. So that's where I'm coming from.
Right. That's, that's absolutely right, but DESE is the final arbiter of these calls in terms of what meets and what doesn't. I don't think it does. Jay told me he didn't think it does, but it doesn't. He's well aware of your financial situation, however. He knows what's been going on here. We've kept him somewhat up to date on what's going on in Winchon, and so I would encourage you to talk to him about it tomorrow.
I would think it that, if I understood you, Rick, you had said that DOE wouldn't count it because it would, they've already counted those expenditures in years past. But the reality is that, that none of the health insurance was charged to the towns in years past. It's a deficit that was accumulated in years past, but not charged.
I, I think I think when the end-of-year reports were finally submitted a month or so ago, they had the information to allocate the increased health insurance cost, the actual cost, to schools. I, I believe that was done.
Including the deficit amount of money?
The Superintendent might be able to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but
The cost.
The deficit just means that they didn't have the money to pay it, but the costs were allocated, I think, from the last report. I'll have to talk to my business manager, but we can, we can look at it.
I've got a few questions that we, before Monday, and I don't think I should take up the, this meeting with those questions.
Are there any other articles on here that you see that might be presenting us a problem?
Are there any other articles on here that you see that might be presenting us a problem?
No, not at this time, no. I, I, I was looking at a summary sheet and I was getting my concern from the summary sheet. I can't say that I've looked at all the narrative, but Town Council, I think, should be able to give you an idea if there's, if she sees anything of concern.
Mr. B.
If I may go back, I didn't catch your last name. I'd like to give respect where respect is due. Tony?
Oh, thank you.
I would call you Mr., but I didn't catch your last name.
Tony's fine, it's Tony Rassus.
Rassus, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I believe you mentioned that we can expect to see a different form of the budget of, um, what did you say? A line item. Were you referring to like we should actually consider or vote at town meeting, line item? Or could you expound upon that, please?
The last budget, I think, that, that you saw was a line item in nature. Was, that you voted in November, was it?
Revoted.
That was revoted.
Okay.
So if you were at the, the last town meeting, you voted it in this fashion. If you were at the last annual town meeting, you, you saw something different. You voted a bottom line. And where that bottom line does allow some type of flexibility, it, it really wasn't allowing an accountability. So that someone would say, this is how much my budget is. Because in the, in the other way, it's, well, this is how much it looks like, but maybe I can trade off with someone else. And that's how, that's how we got into trouble here. So now it, it has more accountability. And if that's going to be the budget, that's what you're going to, you can spend up to that amount. You can't spend more than that amount. And that's, you know, the way the law is written. So it, is it forcing everybody to think differently? Yes?
So through the chair, if I may. So the budget as printed in the warrant, you consider this a line item budget?
Uh, yes. Yes.
Okay.
So we should, you don't want to just vote the bottom line, that's, that's the thing.
So we go line by line down the budget and vote each line item?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can I, can I explain?
Sure, go ahead.
You're used to seeing, sorry. For those of you who typically attend town meeting, you're used to seeing the, like, areas. So there would be, you know, general government area, public safety area, and those were the lines that you voted. So any amounts within that general government area were able to be spent for any of the purposes of general government. There are some towns, especially in the smaller towns, where they'd have every single proposed expenditure in a different line. And this is somewhat in the middle. It's saying expenses are going to be paid from one line and personnel is going to be paid from another line. So essentially salaries and expenses are not fungible. But this does impose a more limited spending authority because the expenditures have to be made within the lines. Now, in terms of what it would look like at town meeting, typically, it's just been a vote on the budget. You know, you, you have it in front of you, you can see there's some backup information. But in this case, the moderator may want to say, and this is what's done in a lot of towns, town hall, police, dispatch, and wait after each. And if anyone wants to discuss the amounts that are recommended for expenditure in each of those categories, they could say, hold. And then once they hold that, there can be a discussion about that proposed budget amount. And I'm sure the moderator would be comfortable with that. That's not an overwhelming change. I think it's understandable to the public and as long as he explained it ahead of time, which I'm sure he would be able to do, then, and then once you vote, you, once you get done with all the holds, if there was a change in any of the departments, you'd vote that. And then when you get to the very end, you vote the entire budget with any of the amendments that are made.
Oh, I understand.
Okay. If I may, just from response, yeah. Our town moderator does go through and lists the, the general and says, if, say, hold if you have any questions, then we do go back to it. So we do already do that practice, so that's helpful. Thank you.
I'd just like to say one thing. My understanding, my understanding on how the budget was going to be voted was even a little bit more in detail and that would be, it would be personnel and then wait and then vote that and then expend, then expenses so that we would have that control between the personnel line items and expenditures.
Mr. Chair, you could still accomplish that without, without waiting on each line as long as ahead of time. And, and I can work with the moderator for a script so that when he reads out the script, it's very clear that we are binding the, the town department heads to the personnel line and the expenses line without that being, each one being discussed separately. So that if you wanted to discuss dispatch, you could discuss personnel and expenses at the same time. But when it was voted, it would be the personnel line and the expense line with essentially a line in between and no expenditures from either. That would exceed those amounts.
Okay.
Can I just make one observation on, on the, on the budget front? Is, is, is there an actual vote for Monday night? Because this is the warrant language, but is there a vote, that emotion? Does that have a bottom line tally for everything? Because when I look, because when I look at the warrant, it's very difficult for anybody, let alone people who love, like numbers like myself, to tally up what the total budget is.
It does.
So, so the reason why I'm asking is one of the initiatives of the new administration is, is called the Community Compact Cabinet where it's basically incentivizing best practices at a local level. I don't know if you've heard about this yet, but we, we, we're working on it and hopefully if it's funded by the legislature as of July 1, we'll be offering basically technical assistance grants to any community across the Commonwealth that's willing to adopt a best practice. And the best practice will be across various areas of state government, financial management, energy, environment, education, transportation, et cetera. So just thinking about the financial management side, obviously developing and producing a coherent budget that a layperson can understand is a best practice. And if, if the community is willing to do so, you can certainly submit a, an application for it, hopefully right after July 1. Choose as your best practice budget presentation, I believe is what it's going to be called. And whether it's divisional local services or some other outside entity, we'll be able to help you put together what we believe would be a, a nice, open and transparent, both the budget document from the town administrator or town manager, what goes in the warrant and then what's ultimately voted on.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. I, I don't know if this speaks to your question or not, but if you look at Article 7, the very beginning of it, gives the total budget being sought.
That's 11 million of municipal, right? Or was that everything? That's what I mean, it's-
So the grant's available July 1 to, for best practice grant?
As long as the legislature approves it.
Mr. Chairman.
I think it's in both versions.
Yes, so far so good, yes.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair. Because the town votes the school and the general government fund budget separately, that's why there isn't, in the motion under Article 7, that's why there isn't a total government budget. But I think it would be easy enough to add a line or to, to indicate the total as part of the explanation on the budget article so that it's clear that there's a total government budget of X dollars, including the schools.
Does anybody else have any questions at this time? No? Do you have any questions for us before we break up this evening?
I certainly don't have any questions. I'll, I'll just close by reiterating what was said a couple of times already, which is, we're here to help. If things don't materially improve, however, it could be additional state oversight. And I'm not sure if the town wants it, I'm not sure if the state wants it. I think we want to avoid it and have the town manage itself. So we are ready, willing and able to continue to work with, the we really being these people down at that, to work with your town, to do what it takes, whatever's necessary to get you through closing the books in fiscal 15, setting your tax rate for fiscal 16 and making sure that you're able to, that your cash flow is in the right place and all that stuff. So now we're here for that and can't stress, probably the fifth time we'll say it, get an interim town manager whose primary skill set is financial management and then begin the search. And I would recommend some sort of consulting firm to help you with a search for a permanent town, town manager. There are numbers, a number of them out there who can help you with that. Because they can pound the pavement for you, they can, they can help sell the community to the applicants and that type of stuff. So I would, I would strongly recommend that. So it's really about leadership from all of you around the table and whoever you choose as your next town, town manager. So those are my closing remarks.
Well, thank you.
May I ask, I, I do have one question that I'll ask of just not each one of you, but all of you. Are all of you willing to do this? Are you all interested in straightening, straightening this out?
Yes.
Good. So am I.
Myself.
So am I, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Okay. So-
Do you need a motion to close or?
Just one minute. So while we still have everybody here, we now come up with, we now come up with these things that we just found out about. Yeah. How about a motion for a five-minute recess?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chip or tie. I call back to order the tri-board meeting at 6:40. So the question, I guess, having found out all this news, was that we have Article 4, 5 and 6, that's 6 that's no longer being able to fund it because there's no money in the overlay, if I understood the town accountant correctly. So the prior votes now have to be changed. And while we happen to have the finance committee here and the board of selectmen and the school committee, we could, I figured this is the time to have this conversation while we have the cameras on. I don't know what anybody's thoughts are, having just heard that we don't have the money in the accounts to pay for these. So I'll open it up, let us have the conversation because there's really, other than stabilization, there's no other funds available to us.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Millet.
Regarding Article 4, and we just had a conversation with town accountant, we have no overlay surplus account, money in the, overlay surplus. So consequently, Article 4 talks about $10,000 for senior workout program. As a member of the finance committee, we had originally approved this article where I thought that there was money in it. But since there's no money in the overlay surplus, then I would make a motion that we not support this article.
Mr. Chairman. Just, just to provide a little context for this, so this program is running under Chapter 59, Section 5K, which is a local acceptance statute. And it authorizes, but doesn't require the town to run this program. But obviously, this is a program that allows seniors to provide services in exchange for reduction in their tax, in their taxes. You know, so if you have people that had already planned on being in that program in the upcoming fiscal year, you just want to let them know that the program couldn't be offered. And it also doesn't mean that you couldn't, if the financial circumstances change later in the, in the, in the fiscal year as you begin it, you could always try to fund it later as well. So you're under no obligation to provide funding or to, to run the program even though you're allowed to under state law.
Right. So if we had a, a, a meeting in the fall, fall town meeting, and we find that we have $10,000, we can put this back on the warrant? Am I correct in understanding that?
The bills. Yes, I don't see any reason why you couldn't. It may be something that you'd have to talk to the tax collector about, depending on the way that you do your billing for the taxes, to adjust the amounts that would go out if you do estimated billing earlier in the fiscal year. But I don't see any reason why you couldn't fund it later. Some towns, just for your information, don't even fund it in this way. They just fund it through the overlay with no appropriation.
Right, but if there's no money in the overlay?
Um, yes. One source of funds is the surplus and another is just the overlay itself. And so there, there is money that's appropriated or, or reserved essentially by the board of assessors to pay for abatements. And so some towns fund it just through the overlay and they don't vote that at town meeting.
To the accountant, how much money is in the overlay account?
Right now, we have receivables against all of our overlay, so no overlay is available in any of the years.
So again, there's no money available for all these three articles, other than stabilization at this time?
Right.
Okay.
I have a question. With the vacancy of the town manager and no one receiving that salary, would there not become some monies available that are appropriated?
To do a transfer, would, and this is some-
That could be transferred or?
Right, we're, we're talking about the annual town meeting though.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there, there could be some. You know, we'd have to make sure it's within the 3% of the budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
So if there's monies available in the current budget in any line item and it's not expected that that money would be expended by the end of the year, then those monies could be transferred for any legal purpose. And it can go from the regular budget to, I mean, the current budget to a special town meeting, special to general. But I do want to caution you that if and when you're able to find an interim to come in, you are going to need money for that as well. And so you may want to consider whether you want to reserve that, at least for the moment, to see. There is a, a, a provision of state law that allows the board of selectmen with the approval of the finance committee to do transfers within budget lines for the current fiscal year, but that wouldn't translate and then, you know, be able to fund this.
Sure, next year.
You will have a fall town-
No, I understand.
You will have a fall town meeting.
Having gotten the news, I'm trying to get the sense of the board, which way they, you know, because obviously the last board of selectmen voted in favor of these articles, not knowing that we didn't have any funds. So to go to town meeting and say the board of selectmen endorses these articles would be disingenuine when there's no money.
Right. So what had happened is the vote of the assessors did not take place until April 27th. So that was very late to be able to act on whether there was actually funds in the overlay or not.
I'm not assessing, no-
No, I'm just giving you a, a timeline on how this happened.
Right, they didn't have a chance to, to, to fund, to find out if there were going to be funds available. I understand that, but it's still, if the, when you walk into the town meeting Monday night, you're going to see board of selectmen voted 4-0 and then we're going to have to go up there and explain that there's no money in the account and what, while we have the opportunity to meet prior to town meeting, I'm trying to get a sense of the-
My sense is that, is that we should do just what you described first. I mean, things have changed, you have new information, you took a vote, or the board of selectmen and the finance committee took a vote at a certain point in time. And based on the information we had, these were the votes we took. So I, I think that we go to town meeting and, and we need to determine really whether the intent is to pass over these articles and perhaps bring them up again in, in the fall town meeting or whether there's a motion to amend the articles and direct that they be funded out of stabilization. Seems to be those are the two options, but to sit here tonight and redo our votes, I don't think it's-
No, I'm putting, I'm putting on the table the idea of, here's where we are, let's have the conversation because A, we're on TV and people are just getting the news like we're getting the news. I'm just trying to get a sense of the boards, what your, what your thought is, what Mr. Millet's thought is, you know, everybody else, so.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm not asking for a vote.
Mr. Chairman. You know, we're on very tough financial constraints and I understand what Tom is saying, but, you know, we need to cut any items that we don't need. And I, I support the senior worker program, but旦it, if we don't have any money to pay for it, then we certainly can't support it. I understand that we could take it out of stabilization fund, but again, a stabilization fund is not a piggy bank that you could use for just about anything. We need to be very, very careful what we do. And this is an article- about anything. We need to be very, very careful what we do. And this is an article that, you know, we should pass over. You know, we can spend two hours debating this thing, but if we don't have any money, we shouldn't be spending it. You know, we're going to be going to town meeting, presenting a balanced budget. And if we don't have any money to support these articles, then we have an unbalanced budget. So we need to cut these three articles in some fashion, some, out of the way in some fashion. So we either pass over these articles or vote not to support these articles.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBee.
Just for clarification, I understand that Article 4, as just explained, it is not something that we are required to do. Article 5, I believe, would fall into that same category. We are not required to give some consideration of financial to the CAC. Number 6, however, does have the word "required" in it. So number 6, we are required to fund?
We're not required.
To fund the required study?
Right. That's an actuarial study that is required. We need to have it in '15. It becomes part of our financial statements. And actually, our financial statements will not be considered complete in '15 if we do not have the actuarial done, this particular study done. However, what this article is saying is to specifically vote the cost of that out of overlay surplus. That doesn't have to take place. You know, the only reason that it's in an article is because we were requesting, or someone was requesting, that it be paid out of overlay surplus. It could be paid out of something else and not put in an article, because it is a required cost.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
You know what you're paying up. Audit and services.
Do we need anything? You said it could be paid out of something else?
Right. We could pay it out of our auditing services.
Okay. So there's really no need for us to address any sort of payment for this?
Not necessarily.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Regarding Article 4, I guess the work, the work the seniors are doing, if they did not do it, would we have to pay someone to do it?
Is the work decided in the past?
So my understanding is the seniors do volunteer work, and then for that, they get an abatement of their taxes. If they didn't do that, is that a job that someone would have to be paid to do?
I don't know. I think you'd have to talk to the individual departments that the seniors work for.
And I might suggest, moving forward, that we look at it that way, because then it's really no net loss. Because if you're replacing someone who would be paid with someone you're paying, in a sense, with a tax abatement, then you're even again, and there's no real cost to it. But my concern would be, if we don't do this, then we are losing money on the other side. You know, if we have to then hire someone to do the thing that the senior did as a volunteer.
This is a point of information. My understanding, when we're reviewing these articles, there were only eight citizens--
Yeah, there wasn't many, but--
Only eight people using that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I would imagine that if there weren't volunteers to do the work, then this would wind up falling back within the department's standard responsibilities. I understand that with less staff, it's obviously more difficult to do, or to meet level service. But I assume it would be absorbed. That being said, you know, there's time before Monday to have a conversation with the department heads about that.
Right. So--
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBee.
If I could, I'd like to speak to Article 5. I think somebody needs to stand up for the CAC here, so I guess I'll do it. $18,000. I know that we're in tough financial straits, and I understand Mr. Millet's concerns about going to stabilization for any funding. But this, the CAC does $18,000 worth of help to this community and more each year. And I would really hate to see them basically just cut off at the knees. This is a fair amount of their budget. And maybe they shouldn't have come to depend on it, but it's going to be tough for them to meet the needs that they have if this money isn't appropriated or found somehow.
Okay. So the school committee's going to meet in about five minutes, so we're going to need to clear this room. But that was just on the table, for people to understand that this money's no longer available to the way it was originally asked for on the warrant. We will be meeting Monday night. The Board of Selectmen will be meeting Monday night at 6:15 at Murdoch, prior to town meeting. If, we will have a discussion on this at that time. Other than that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
If I may, just quickly. Can we move on town floor, move any, these articles to be paid from another source?
Yes.
That can be done on town floor. Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we adjourn at 6:55.